Senior's not coming today. Ready? Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Najad is absent. Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabour.
Present.
Commissioner Jabea.
Present.
Commissioner Javed.
Here.
Commissioner Linton.
Here.
Commissioner Little is absent. Acting Chair Macon.
Here.
Commissioner Senegal is absent. Alternate Commissioner Dixon.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Sorrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? If there's any changes or motion?
So move for approval.
So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. All right, we're going to start with PZ 2025-226. Staff report, please.
Good afternoon. Access Surveyors is seeking approval for a replat of Lot 16, Block 19, Gulf Terrace Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas into Lot 16A and 16B, Block 19, Gulf Terrace Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to divide one lot into two for residential development. Staff sent 31 property owner notices and we received zero in favor and one in opposition. Opposition stating the lot is not big enough and I've maintained it for 25 years. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area under review. And again, this is taking one lot into two. On this, let me get my mouse over here. On this, the area that was in opposition was this one. It's possible he was talking, or the individual was talking about this lot. But hopefully they came today to set the record straight on it.
Okay.
This is an aerial image. And this is the plat. And I believe we have Colby Anderson present.
Okay, any questions of staff? Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors. We're located at 11025 Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas.
Is there anything additional you'd like to add to this?
I guess with the opposition, the lots are a minimum of 50 feet wide. So they do meet the city minimum standards for residential, single-family dwelling.
Okay.
I do want to apologize for saying the wrong last name. That was an engineer that works for us. This is Colby Bracken.
Right, I just got that. Okay, any questions of? Thank you, Colby.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, public hearing's now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, none is heard. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a discussion or a motion?
I'll move to approve PZ 2025-226.
A second?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? No. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mayor, your turn.
About 3:15.
You're right. We got through in a hurry. Yes.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner is absent. Councilmember Crenshaw. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're going to start with filed PZ 2025-229. May we have the staff report, please?
Good afternoon. Justin Broussard requests approval of a rezoning from residential, single-family to light industrial for the property located at 6187 Fennett Road. The intent of the rezoning is to consider other industrial or commercial development opportunities with the potential to expand an RV park. According to the comprehensive plan of Beaumont, the property is located within a contemporary neighborhood design concept area. The proposed rezoning does not align with the comprehensive plan. Staff discussed this rezoning with the applicant a couple of weeks ago. And at that time, he was uncertain of his development plan. Due to the uncertainty of the development plan, the existing surrounding zoning district, and the comprehensive plan designation, planning recommends denial of this request. Staff did send eight property owner notices and we did not receive any in favor or opposition. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area for the rezoning. You can see that that area is currently designated in the yellow, which is RS. They would like for it to be light industrial. Aerial image. Subject property in west. To the west. North. East and south. I don't believe that the applicant is here, but I do believe that there is a representative present.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Can you go back to the map, the aerial? Is that another RV park or trailer park across?
I believe so, yes.
All righty.
And I believe this area, let me bring the mouse over. There it is. I believe this area received a specific use permit. I can't recall the year, but it was to build an RV park there. However, that's not happened at this point. Oh, it was renewed last year.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Thank you. Is the representative for the applicant in the audience? Yes, sir. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Jonathan Hart, 2206 Nantucket Drive, Houston, Texas, 77057.
Okay. Mr. Hart, is there any additional information you would like to add to this?
Just a little context. The RV park is no longer likely to happen. That had been a project that my partner was doing with his father. His father has unfortunately since passed away. And so that is why about a year ago, they put the brakes on that project. Have since not moved forward. I am partnering with him to find a developer in order to find the highest and best use for the property and find a takeout for him. Well, we've analyzed this property. The seven acres is currently zoned for light industrial. So we're working with a team of brokers to find a developer for that seven acres. The question is, can we include the three acres in this project? Because right now, if we do develop the seven acres, the three acres cannot be included because of zoning classification and will essentially be useless for the process of development. And then also, once the seven acres is zoned, it's no longer an optimal residential tract. And so what we're trying to do is rezone the three acres so we can include it in the seven acre development, potentially increase economic development and the property value, and move forward with the project with the 10 acres completely zoned for light industrial.
So you want it to be light industrial or you want it residential?
No, we want it to be light industrial. We're developing the seven acres for permitted use for the light industrial. Or he also owns the three acres next to it. So we would like to develop the entire 10 acres to the light industrial use.
I have a question. My question is back to Demi. In your previous, this property that's next to it, that's in the gray, that's already light industrial?
Yes. It was rezoned a few years ago. I don't have the exact date, but it was rezoned a few years ago. And then most recently, it got a specific use permit for an RV park. But it's not taken off, as he said. It's not taken off. So they're wanting to include, I'm assuming that y'all own this acreage or the three acreage. They're wanting to include that. The only, a big hesitation is obviously the zoning district around it from a planning standpoint. The zoning district around it is entirely a single-family aside from across the way for Ford Park. Also, the comprehensive plan doesn't align with it. Once you rezone to light industrial, there's certain uses that can go there. You know, it could be an RV park or it could be an industrial plant. It is zoned as light industrial. So that's just things to consider. Once you rezone a property, it's tough to, it's tough to know exactly what's going to go in there, whether there's intent or not, because there's certain things that do come up that would stall certain developments, a lot like what, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartman? A lot like what Mr. Hartman said.
So is that a residential home right next door to it?
It is.
Is someone currently living there?
My partner has said it is vacant. I've driven past it. It looks to be vacant.
Either way, it's still a residential, single-family home. However, it's something to consider, all these things. And so we didn't get any in favor or opposition. I did expect some opposition, but we didn't receive any.
And our intent here is, you know, given the baseball fields, Doggett Family Stadium right down the road and the RV park, our intent is to do some sort of small, light commercial, whether that's maybe a gas station, some sort of food area where these people, you know, during the sports venues can visit. And if not, to do some sort of light industrial that's consistent with, you know, the considerable industrial that is just west down the road.
One day I plan to have a plan for what you're actually going to do with.
So we're working with a brokerage team right now, based in Houston, to identify developers. The, you know, roadblock for us is we don't know, can we market this as seven acres right off of, you know, 3,000 feet off of the interstate that can be developed? Or can we market it as 10 acres? So we have waited to actually go to market with the proposal to find developers until we gain clarity on how much we can actually market as light industrial that can be developed.
Hey, Demi, I have a question for you. So the one, the acreage next door, is it, he can only make an RV park on that with the current setup?
No. With the acreage, are you talking about the one to the north that's already zoned as light industrial? It's opened up quite a bit of uses that can already be there by right.
Got you.
And that is our purpose is, you know, we are going to aim to develop the seven acres. So if we don't include the three acres, he owns a residential tract next to his, you know, industrial, commercial development. Maybe he sells it to a residential user down the line that's going to want to build a house on it. But it becomes less optimal for residential use once we develop that seven acres. If we can include the three acres in the seven acre development, now it can increase in property value because we can develop the whole thing. We can potentially increase the scope of developers that we can market to.
Have you spoken to the homeowner who is right next door to the property?
No. When I spoke with Justin about this, he said it was vacant. He said he's.
But you don't, having spoken to the owner of the property?
We haven't, no.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of Mr. Hart? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, it's now open for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, none heard. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
I have a motion to, what's the word? To table it until they have a more comprehensive plan of what they want to do with the whole three acres plus the six.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second.
Do you have a timeline of when you'd like to see this case back?
Within 120 days, I would say, because if they're doing a whole IMST report and everything, you want to give them time to actually come up with a plan and a concept. So 120 days, I think is capable of that.
Okay. Can I, can we write it as four months or five months? Rather than one?
Oh, yeah, four months, yeah.
Just so, yeah.
Instead of days?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to add that to your motion?
Yes, I think I'm going to wait for him to get back in so you can.
Oh, yeah. Okay, you want to revise your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm revising the motion for, to table this for a five-month period for him to come with a more comprehensive plan for what he wants to do with this property.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table for five months and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for us to table that. Okay, filed PZ 2025-237.
Nadia Morphin requests a specific use permit to allow a liquor store at 4515 North Major Drive. The GCMD II zoning district requires a specific use permit for all new proposed land uses. The store will sell a variety of ales, spirits, mixers, and other retail products. Planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, shall comply with all building and fire codes. Staff did send 17 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and one in opposition. Opposition simply stated no. However, that opposition represented 20.9% of the portion of the surrounding land within 200 feet of the proposal. Therefore, when the time comes for this to go to city council, it's going to require a three-force vote of all the city members, or of all the council members for it to pass. So three-force is 5.25. So of the seven, so at least six members have to affirm it. The area outlined in red is the area under review. Aerial image. This is the site plan. And the area outlined in red, that's the suite where the liquor store is requesting to be. This is the subject property. Continued. Subject in west. To the north. To the east. And to the south. And I believe we have the applicant present.
Okay. The building that's going to, the suite is in, is that the only one that's vacant? Or?
I believe that's our first application for this store, this strip center. So it's not completely CO'd out or finished yet. So it will need to have a CO before they can occupy.
Got it, okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
My name is Nadia Figaroa. My address is 2817 Windsor Lane, Port Neches, Texas, 77651.
Okay. Is there any additional information you'd like to add?
I think she has provided the majority of information, but I will, would like to say that what I am providing, everything is to-go. I don't have anything in the facility that's going to be in the facility. Nothing is consumption or anything else. It's just a to-go liquor store. And I am on the unit A, which is, I'm facing the left right now. So on the left, which is the first unit that you see on that building. It is currently vacant. There is another pending business on the right-hand side, but at the moment, I would start as an empty facility. It is empty.
Do you have any other experience in this business?
I currently own another business. I currently own Spoonet in Beaumont. It's a frozen yogurt factory. It's a little bit different. I have owned other businesses in the past, food-related.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
No problem.
I'm sorry, one more question. Did you plan to put security cameras or anything?
Yes, the, I have already requested that with the property owner, but there, he is providing some security cameras and I will be providing all the interior and he will do all the exterior.
Okay, and one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you, is it already currently leased to you or you're waiting for decision from this group?
No, I have already signed a lease over, it's been, I think, over two months.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Is there? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition? Yes, sir. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, how are y'all? I'm Dylan Richardson, I'm at 4575 North Major Drive. So I'm at the blue and stone apartments right-
Mr. Richardson, what's your address again, sir?
4575 North Major Drive.
Got it.
So it sees blue and stone apartments right here in that picture. The speed of traffic on Major isn't conducive to retail. It doesn't really make sense. So like, if you go to like Mont Belvieu, they're very particular about the positioning of liquor retail stores in their community. And so I'm really kinda just reaching out to implore y'all to be mindful about where we're putting liquor stores. There's a liquor store at every major artery on Major Drive. 105 Folsom Gladys, Phelan Walden. To put one on Major Drive where the speed of traffic is relatively high, it doesn't make much sense. It's just not a good market for it. And when are we gonna become a city that really prioritizes like effective employment development as opposed to just liquor retail? Just nail salons, doughnut shops, just the typical things that go on Major Drive.
Okay. Any questions of this gentleman? Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Richardson, there's been some opposition. Would you like to come up and address that? I mean, Ms. Figaroa? Sorry.
So I am aware of his concern that, you know, it is an area of development. At the moment, I am aware that there is a corner store already previously across the street and other developments that are currently pending for similar businesses. And I, so my purpose for this business is not, you know, I have no control over the traffic, obviously, with he did state. You know, my goal and operation is to manage just a to-go-only liquor store, fully compliance of the city-state and TABC regulations. I have no intention of creating any nuisance disturbance to the community. I will maintain a clean, safe, and well-monitored store. I am committed to being a responsible business owner and to add, rather, you know, value than anything else to this community. And that's my sole purpose. I also will be staffing the facility, so I am trying to bring, you know, employment and income to the area. I am just wanting to improve the area and the development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure traffic has already looked at this as an issue, correct?
Engineering's reviewed, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay.
I do have one question.
Yes.
So you sent out 17 property owners. So did y'all get any, what's the response on that? How many in favor and how many?
Zero in favor and one in opposition. Opposition was the apartment complex across the road. And so because of how large that area is, and these are large tracks, I can go back to this aerial image and probably give you, oh, I'm sorry. So you can see how large those tracks are surrounding it. So across the way to the west, that's the one that was in opposition. And because of that, it kicks in the 20% rule, which just means that council, if they want to have this, will have to do a supermajority vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If there's no other opposition or in favor, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion or discussion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Real quick, is that with the conditions?
I'm sorry, yes, with one condition.
Got it. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any in opposition?
No.
Well, no. Okay, let's do a, you wanna do a hand vote? Susan? Yeah. Okay, everyone in favor of approving filed 2025-237, hold up your hand. Okay, those in opposition?
I think, yeah.
We have an alternate-
We have three and three.
One of the alternate, I think has a vote.
We have an alternate member present, Mr. Sorrell.
And how would you vote?
We have two alternates, right?
Yeah.
Or it.
Okay. And our-
I'll guess it.
Yes. So we- So you're in opposition, so we have four and four?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a discussion that we need to go over? Anyone wanna change their mind? Okay. Staff, what do we do now?
So, city attorney, let me know if I'm wrong on this. So we can present it in the council memo, or the council memo, that, you know, four were in favor, four were in opposition, and then ultimately, as, this is a recommendation to council. So we can put that as the recommendation to them.
Great. Okay, and that's the end of that. Mayor?
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.